I'm always want more.
But I brought out the information. I think we could still go into the first session and talk about it. Oh, we can't.
Oh, yeah.
We have a trigger.
Let's see if we're so I mean, I can still be here at 11:00. I don't have to leave. We're not going to be out until 11:00.
See?
Yeah.
Oh.
Right on time.
We have last slide. Let's stay on that.
Lives and legions to the flag of the United States of America, into your republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Welcome.
Greg Scott. Mark Cerberus.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David.
Here.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Can we add on at the end? Community development for GPS.
Would you like that?
At the end, fine.
Just after our.
How about? Yes, because we're also going to move D, the close session, to after public comment. Because Greg cannot be with us until at least 11 o'clock. So.
We're going to be here till 11:00.
That's the best case scenario. If not, we'll just postpone it till next week. Okay. Any other additions or corrections? Okay. Item two, we got public comment. There are two areas for public comment. I'm going to read this once. On December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 20-77 to adapt rules of procedure that include a structured public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period is reserved for public statements on any matter or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manner. Failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or drives a speaker. The board takes to an advanced compliance with these rules. Public comment. This is for agenda items only. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, A, we have appointments. Brian Goodenough, Foster, Swift, Collins, and Smith, related to legal services proposal. Come on up, guys.
Thank you.
And.
Love you.
Trish.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you for having us. Counsel, thank you. Tim, thanks for inviting us. We, the way we're going to approach this, unless you want to approach it differently, is give you a little overview of the firm and give you a little background on how long we've been doing this and what we do and who we represent, some of the pitfalls that we see, some of the practice areas that we're, that we focus in individually, and then take any questions that you might have and sort of let you direct the interview process. It's not really our practice to come and preach at one of our city councils or our townships or villages. We instead try to have a teamwork type approach, a feedback approach. And so we want to make sure that we're addressing the areas that you're most interested in. On the web screen, we have Laura Genovich in the top left corner and Tom.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Tom Maher is over two. If we do our job right, you'll never see Tom Maher. Tom Maher is our, is our, is our senior partner in litigation. Laura Genovich is one of our county experts, and she's unable to be here today due to a county commission meeting. Hey. Patricia Scott is a, well, you tell them it's your claim to fame.
I'm a litigator, and I'm also the practice group leader of our finance, real estate, and bankruptcy practice group. So I govern all of that area.
And she's from here.
And I graduated here from Ogama Heights.
So, and Serink is our firm president, and she's also the head of our municipal practice group, and I'm in our municipal practice group as well. We have different focuses. So the firm itself has been around for 125 years. We've been handling municipal work the entire time, all the way back with Camp, one of us, Camp, Ellen Foster, Lindemere. Lindemere became a Supreme Court Justice, and the history goes on and on, but it's always had a municipal base component as part of the firm's makeup. We have just shy of 100 lawyers in the firm, spread over five different offices, Lansing, Grand Rapids, St. Joe, Holland, and Southfield. Our firm is broken into six general, six, seven general practice groups. We have an employment services practice group, which handles employee benefits. It handles all labor issues, contract negotiations, arbitrations. We have two lawyers that are devoted solely to labor. That's the only thing that they do. One of them is our chief negotiator for union contracts. I specialize in zoning and land use. That's really my area of expertise. I taught at Cooley for over a decade in zoning and land use. That's where I practice. I, I, with Tom Maher, handle one of the largest municipal insurance carriers in the state of Michigan. It's Tokyo Marine, Houston Casualty and Claims. Used to be known as Midwest Claims. We handle 32 different counties for any litigated matters that they receive. We also serve as general counsel. Anne is a general municipal lawyer, as well as an expert in Freedom of Information and Open Meetings. She, it's incredible that somebody could specialize in Freedom of Information Act and Open Meetings Act, but the clients that she's handled, not the least of which was Michigan State University during a pretty turbulent time over the last three or four years to deal with all of their FOIA requests, and there were many and many. So she's very up to date on law, and she can address the issues there. We've seen a lot of pending litigation that's come out of the recent changes in Freedom of Information, Open Meetings Act. There are a lot of changes that we need to be cognizant of, and so she's familiar with that. And Laura Genovich, like I said, I think she's in a Muskegon County Board of Commissioners meeting later today at some point in time, and so we couldn't bring her on the trip. The reason that we break ourselves down into smaller sub-practice groups within practice groups is so that when you have a particular area or a particular concern, you can get ahold of us, and we probably know the answer. We represent over 200 municipalities in the state of Michigan currently. Some of them are handled as a general counsel basis. Some of those are handled on a, on a more of a project direct basis. We have an environmental, we have an entire environmental team. So in cases, oftentimes, when there's an environmental issue or brownfield development issue, our environmental team will handle it because general counsel for some of the smaller communities that we work with doesn't feel comfortable handling it. And so that would be an example of a project-based approach. We do a lot of code enforcement. We write a lot of ordinances. We're really familiar now with wind energy and solar energy and the pitfalls associated with the zoning related to that and how we develop that. Some want them, some communities do not want them. And so, you know, we know really how to, how to direct those issues. We view our role as your roadmap. We don't set policy. That's not our job. That's your job, and we work for you. So we give you the best options, and we try to give you more than one option so that you, as policymakers for the county, figure out what approach works best for the county. We tell you the risks associated with the various approaches that we're suggesting, and then whatever direction you choose to go, with all of the information that we can provide you, leaves you with an informed decision that you make, and then we help you to implement that. But again, it's a team approach for us. You know more about this county than we could ever know about this county, even though we do our research and, and we pay attention to what's going on. You live here on a daily basis. And so without that interaction, without that team approach, we simply, we simply wouldn't be nearly as effective as, as we believe we are. I'm going longer than I wanted to because I want to get, give these guys a chance. But the one thing I do want to stress to you is that most of our municipal clients have been with us for decades. So when we, when we form a relationship with a new client, we're in it for the long haul. And so we start from ground zero. We first try to figure out what, you know, what are the, what are the issues that the county is currently facing, and how do we get you to where you want to go? And one of the first things that we often do is we'll take a look at your ordinances, because you'd be surprised how many times we find ordinances that are just simply out of date. And so we kind of, we kind of get a feel for what the issues are here, and then we try to figure out how we engage in maybe some preventive type approaches. The lawyers at our firm and the staff at our firm, there's longevity, there's not turnover. And my secretary's been there for almost 50 years. She served when she was, well, she'd kill me if I told you when she's. We won't tell you that, but she's been there.
Yeah.
Yeah. The secretary that was there before her had been there for 50 years. So we don't turn over internally. We don't turn over with our clients. We're very loyal to our clients. We do not believe in our, in our philosophy is that I don't care whether you're Livingston County or Clare County or Ogama County. Every county operates under the same set of laws. You have the same enabling statutes. You have the same issues. They may be at a different scale, but we treat every single one of our clients exactly as we do the next. And so we've given you our proposal. We can talk about that in detail with you. We have not offered you a retainer option. I can tell you, I've been doing this for 30 years. In my experience, our experience, retainers simply do not work. They just don't work for us. And we've tried them. We've worked on that, you know, and it's, it's a real trust relationship that you get into with a client when you do that. And it's not the fact that we don't trust the new client. It's the fact that nobody really understands what a retainer entails. There's always an argument over, was that in the retainer or is that outside the retainer? Is that hourly? Is that not hourly? And at the end of the day, we just find that you have better control of your cost. You have control of how things, how your legal budget develops, and we, we ask for the trust from you that we don't bill you for every, every time you pick up a phone call and you call and say, hey, do you guys have a new ordinance that deals with wind energy or solar energy? You know, we don't run to our time sheets and write down point three telephone call counts or from the county requesting information on solar energy. We just don't do that. And so there's a lot of things that we do that we don't bill you for. Finally, the last thing I want to touch on, and then I'll turn it over to Anne, but seminars, we're big on seminars. We like to come down here at your convenience and provide you with maybe an informational seminar, because it's only worth appeals or your planning commission, bring them up to speed. I mean, sign ordinance right now, sign ordinance, given the decision and read, is, is a horrible thing for communities. Even the courts don't understand them, but communities now are getting sued right and left because of their sign ordinances. And those are things that we think if we can educate you upfront, that's the best preventive maintenance that we can, can give you. So I'm going to turn it over to Anne and anybody else that you have questions of. Laura Genovich will probably be one of your main contacts. We try to give you a main contact person. That's the way that we work. Three things you'll get from us. You make a phone call, you'll get a phone call back that day. Okay? We all have backups, but you'll have a primary person within which to make contacts. You have to search around. You're going to see the same person. You're not going to have different people bouncing in and out of your meetings. There's no continuity that way. We don't need to be reeducated as to what happened at the last meeting because we will have been at the last meeting, whether it be by Zoom or by in-person if that becomes necessary. So that's the, that's the first thing. You're going to get, a second thing, actually, you're going to get a return call on the day you make it. You're going to have a contact person that's there, and you're always going to have the person who is most knowledgeable in the area where you have an issue working on that matter. And this is, this is a small part of the team. Employment Services guys aren't here. The corporate guys aren't here. The condemnation lawyers aren't here. We handle the road commission work. So we're pretty well versed in covering any areas where we think you could have a concern. So sorry to be so long, but I tried to cram it all in as quickly as I could.
Well, I just, I think I was, because Brian covered a lot of the stuff that I think one of our focuses is teamwork, and we have a lot of our team here just because I want, we want to show you that we have a number of people. We have backups to our backups. We have a lot of different areas of expertise. But I guess, you know, this is your, this is your meeting, you know, what, have, want to ask how you want to proceed, if you want to ask questions, if you want us to provide more information at this point.
I think we'd like to ask a few questions.
Sure.
With that.
Yeah.
I guess my question you guys would start with is, why do you want Ogama County?
Who wants to answer that?
I can answer that. I'm happy to answer that, and I'm happy to be here. And, you know, Brian indicated the law is the same for everybody, and representation, I don't want to say that's the easy part, but doing the legal work in some respect is the easy work. What's important is the relationships, right? And understanding and meeting people where they live. And I know where you all live because I've lived here. And so to have the opportunity to help Ogama County, I know you face some challenges. We all know that. To be able to help you would be, would be something that we would be able to do, given our experience. I won't call Brian old, but he's earned that right here. So to be able to, with our experience and our, you know, our expertise, I think that we could help Ogama County a lot, and it would be our, our privilege to do so.
Commissioner Newbecker?
No, it was very, very nice presentation, very informative. Yeah, you were humble, and, and you obviously have a very good reputation and resume.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in to see us today.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity. And if I can just explain what Trish said, so I'm, I live in the city of DeWitt, which is a small town, and I represent the city of DeWitt. And I can tell you that when you're from the community that you represent or you have roots in the community that you represent, there's, you don't, and I, and this sounds like I'm being contradictory to what I said earlier. We treat everybody the same, but when you have a passion, because it's your hometown, that makes a difference. And I can tell you that a lot of times I don't, like, I shouldn't say this on camera either, but sometimes I don't build a city in DeWitt for the things that I do because I live there, and I'm very concerned about how things come out. I don't direct their policy, but I make sure that there's a passion there that I want to make sure that, you know, they, they see it, they feel it. I live there. I just think it's an important piece of the puzzle that often gets overlooked.
Mr. Vaughn?
Um, what would you hope to accomplish in the first year as our attorney?
I think one of the things that we, we like to do when we, we start with a new client is, to me, it's a two, sort of a twofold process. One is to obviously meet with you, meet with the different, you know, boards and commissions and, you know, your elected officials and figure out what your, what your concerns are, what your top concerns are. So that's first and foremost, one of the things that we do. The second thing that we do is based on our experience. For example, I, I do all the Freedom of Inf, or not all, but a lot of the Freedom of Information I've worked for the firm, and I have, what I like to do when I start with a new client is to figure out what your processes are. What do your policies look like? How do you normally respond? Because there's a lot of liability with FOIA. People send FOIA requests in, and there's a lot of lawsuits, and they're hard to get rid of because they get their attorney fees paid for if you lose. So not only do you have to pay your lawyers, but then you have to pay their lawyers. So one of my goals is never to get into those lawsuits. We don't want to, you know, involve Tom at all with proactive treatment, making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed with how you do your denial letters, for example. Those things go a long way. So really figuring out what, what's important to you, what are your, you know, top goals. I know you have a millage coming up. We, you know, I review millage material, figuring out what, you know, election needs you would have, some of those hot, hot items that come from, come from you. You know, we, we can read your minutes. We can figure out what you've done over the last year, but really knowing what your top priorities are is something that we, we would come in and do. But also, again, based on our expertise, there's probably a few things that I would look at. How does, you know, I, I thought your public comment policy was fantastic. A lot of communities don't have a public comment policy, so things like that, making sure your Open Meetings Act processes are in place. Those, those are the types of things we would do. I do a lot of training. I just, we just had a new city come on board recently, and I did a, for example, a webinar for not only their elected officials, but, you know, a lot of their employees, so that they understand, for example, that they have duties to collect records for, if you send in information through FOIA coordinator, and you send them a request for information, how, how important it is for them to meet the deadlines and get the information back to you because there's a lot of liability there. So those, those types of training, Brian mentioned that already, are things that we do regularly in the beginning.
And if I can jump in on that up here on the screen in the back, I'm Laura Genovich, and I do a lot of work with our county clients, building on what Anne said. We really like to have an understanding as well of what kind of public works and public infrastructure projects might be coming down the road so that we can help the county plan for that. We do have bond counsel in our firm, so you don't have to go outside to another law firm to get your bond, bond counsel services. We negotiate and draft and review a lot of contracts, both the simple day-to-day and the complex, you know, sewer and water contracts and things like that. So we like to have an idea of what's coming down the pipeline, no pun intended, when it comes to public works, so that we can help the county move forward with those things as well.
And the other thing with, with the millage work, so we're in the tax tribunal on a regular basis as well. So if, if any of your millages or taxes or other issues, tax assessments get challenged, we have the expertise to be in the tax tribunal, and we're in there. I would say we're in there every month in some form of litigation, whether it be litigation against a large corporation, like, like a Walmart or Meyer, or where they're trying to, to address their tax issues, or whether it be a homeowner who has decided to take you to the tax tribunal. So we have the expertise there as well.
Yeah, and a lot of times those involve local units, but we definitely have major tax tribunal cases on behalf of Marquette County in the past, Van Buren County, involving large taxpayers. Up in the U.P., it's large mines that have various, not just property tax, but equalization, some other interesting issues. And I do some of that as well as Jack Vancouver in our office, who's kind of well-known in the property tax world for representing the city of Escanaba in the Menard dark store appeal. And those issues can implicate counties as well with large taxpayers, like power plants and any other large taxpayers. Counties often wind up kind of entangled in that. So I work often with our equalization directors for counties, Donna Vanderbrecht, who's pretty well-known around the state in Muskegon County and others. So there's, there's kind of a lot, as you know, that goes into representing a county. It's not maybe as, as narrow as with some other types of municipalities, but, you know, from, from the labor and employment to the elections, to county apportionment issues, which have certainly been a hot topic this year, and we've represented counties and county apportionment commission with those. We have with our team the breadth and depth of experience to bring in the right person for that because we have generalists and we have specialists, and all of us are well-connected. We're in communication with each other every day. And, and as kind of emphasized what Brian said earlier, as the main point of contact, you all have my, my cell phone number, and you can text me. And my clients often text me, and that's usually a fast way to get a response. And of course, email and the old bash and telephone work as well. But we're, we're always, you know, ready to kind of address those myriad issues that can come up for counties.
And that was one of my big questions was what experience you guys have with millages because we, if you've been traveling in Ogama County, that's one of our hot topics right now is Curbin Community College. Its location has changed, and there's three villages that are involved with this. So going forward, that was my question as far as what experience you guys have with millages.
Yeah, and Anne does a lot.
I do a lot of work with millages. We do a lot of millage drafting. We've, and, you know, we've solved a lot of, you know, I represent a lot of libraries and we'll figure out that they're not levying the millage correctly in certain places. So we've been able to resolve those issues. But, you know, with millage drafting, millage proposals, I've been doing that for 20, 25 years now. And Laura and I handle the issues that come up with campaign finance because sometimes there's, when you're marketing the millage, you know, you have to be careful of how you do it. Either have a ballot question committee, or if the county wants to spend money, there's restrictions to that. So we counsel clients on those issues as well.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm looking at your municipal client list. I know that just seven counties, and they're all south of here. You have a lot of communities from, all the way from Hancock all the way down to the Ohio border. We compare a lot. We, we talk about, we talk about projects or situations. We, we compare a lot to other counties, like fair enough counties of our size or our, our size as far as value and things like that. One thing, since, since Jenny brought it up, are you, are you familiar with that community college statute that was put in back in the 60s about community college villages?
I'm not familiar with that. Actually, I mean, I've, I've looked at community college village issues. I'm not exactly sure about what the specific statutory provision that was.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you guys, I think you probably are, we represent Noguaygo County, and you're very similar to Noguaygo County over by Grand Rapids.
It was in school craft up in the.
School craft in the U.P.
It was on the list. Old is on the list.
Yeah, and that, that list is not exhaustive. I mean, we, like I said, we represent over 200 municipalities, and so we didn't put them all on there.
We were just hired by Cass County too, which is a smaller municipality that.
That stuff, so.
Yeah.
This is a hot topic. We're talking about meeting after meeting after meeting. A couple of the villagers don't have a sunset on them. The college is.
Okay.
Locations and trying to find ways.
The jurisdiction.
Get out of, yes, these villages. We're actively working on that.
Well, it's, it's certainly something that we, I mean, we, we address problems as they come up with millages all the time, and statutory interpretation, and those types of things are certainly something we can jump in and handle very easily.
Thank you.
So I guess the, the other thing is, without a retainer, we're talking hour for hour for everything, right?
I'll tell you, we have found in our experience, and, and I don't know if your experience is different, but the retainers, you will save money, is my prediction, on an hourly basis versus a retainer. I just believe, because every, very seldom do you have a retainer that says, for X number of dollars, I will work for you 34 hours a day, seven days a week. You can call me anytime you want, nonstop. Instead, what the retainer typically does is it carves things out. So it says, well, we have a base retainer over here. We'll answer questions if they fall in the base retainer, but if we think they fall outside the retainer, we're going to charge you hourly anyway. And so at the end of the day, it comes down to which basket is it falling in, and who's making that determination? Because I can tell you, you're probably not making that determination. The law firm that you hire is going to make that initial determination as to where that's going to fall. And if they can find a way, they being whoever they are, and find a way to take it out of the retainer box and throw it into the hourly box, that's probably, from the business model, that's probably where it's going to fall. I mean, let's be honest with one another. That's what, that's what's going to happen. And then you don't want to get sideways with your lawyers. I mean, there's got to be a level of trust. And so if you're fighting over whether it's in basket A or basket B, you're already, you're already kind of banging heads. And so we just don't, we just have found that you, you can save a lot of money by doing it on an hourly basis.
And, and a lot of the, you know, a lot of the projects we could give estimates to, I mean, we're, we're really cost-conscious. I represent a lot of libraries that have very small budgets, and I, what, what I don't like and what we don't like is sticker shock on a bill. So we don't want you to get a bill and realize that you think you've asked us an hour question and that we, we took five hours on it. You know, those are the types of things. I don't like that. I don't like those types of situations. So we like to engage in the conversation when the project comes in, what the expectations are. We have, so for example, we do a lot of things like I, you know, I mentioned, we do Freedom of Information Act policies. I, I, I spent, I don't know how many hours developing our initial policy, but instead of charging the first client out of the gate for that, what I do is we charge small flat fees. So if you want a policy, it's the flat fee for that is $350, for example. So those are the types of things we try to do to use economies of scale because we have a lot of municipal clients. We have a lot of, as Laura mentioned, we have the breadth of expertise, and because of that, we can do, provide services in a very cost-effective manner. You know, we don't, you know, we, we just don't get a lot of complaints about our bills, which is, which is, you know, something that, and I take a lot of pride in that.
Okay. It doesn't do us.
I shouldn't base it a judgment on how long it takes you to answer just a couple of questions.
That's a point Walt.
Yeah.
And he said it. You'll learn that that's a very odd question coming from Commissioner Scott. But anyways, it's 2:25 an hour, correct? Did I read that correctly?
Whatever we put in our.
Yes, yes, it's 2:25.
Yes.
Okay.
The voice, the voice.
The voice, yeah.
Sorry, the voice coming from, from beyond.
What's your, what's your idea on, on attendance at our meetings? Would you, would you make that a regular thing? Would you?
But it depends on what you want.
Or would it be only on a. Or would it be only on a request basis?
So my experience, when I, when I started up in the city of Duane, I just lived on the road from them. My suggestion to them was, you know, look, I don't really need to be here at every meeting. There are meetings where you simply do not need me to be physically present. Their response is, we want you physically present at every meeting. We don't care. We don't ask you one question all night. It doesn't matter to us. You're there, the public sees you're there. That's important to us. Now, obviously, I have, we have other clients, all of us have other clients that say, I don't want you to come drive out here.
We got Zoom.
We have Zoom and right.
Yeah, we have Zoom. Yeah. And if I can jump in on that other county, similar sized, Nueago County, Cass County, we have, we attend on request only. They typically don't need us at every meeting, but we're able to be available on request and Zoom does make it very easy. You know, if anything came out of the pandemic, I think it was everybody gaining some Zoom skills. So we have a number of clients now for whom, you know, I attend remotely. That obviously saves the county a lot of money, allows, it also allows not just for the board meetings, which is great, but to even jump on with staff by Zoom and have a video call. You know, I was on a call yesterday with a, you know, county register of deeds and county clerk and some other county folks on some important issues where it was just almost as good as sitting in the room with all of them and we were able on short notice to jump on a Zoom call. So we all have that technology available and as probably your main contact person, I can make myself available for the meetings by Zoom. And I would just say, you know, on request and maybe at the beginning, we're feeling out how often that is and we'll probably get into a good rhythm of when you need me and when you don't, because we don't want to just charge you for the sake of charging you, believe me. We only want to be here when we are providing value to you. So we leave that up to the county, but as I said, for many counties, your size, it's, it's not always necessary.
And this is an incredible setup right here. What we do with some of our smaller communities and we would need to do that because this is, this is pretty amazing. But we have a, we have a, I call it a globe, looks like a globe, and we just provide it to the municipality that we represent where we do a lot of Zoom work. And it gives us a 360-degree view of the room during the course of the meeting. And the firm just provides that you plug it in and it connects to us and then we have the conversation. So that's something that.
Does that record? Will you be able to go back?
Laura, does that? Yeah, but just like any other Zoom connection, so you can.
Like our meetings, you can go on YouTube and watch them, you know, and everything, but from that.
And this wouldn't be for your, for your recording purposes for your public.
No, I was.
More so for us to communicate with you.
Well, I think the thing is, it's like that other, that the whip is like, like us. Once you get into a matter and you're talking about it, we get, we get a half an hour of discussion into a matter. Then we say, oh, let's call the attorney. You don't know anything what we talked about.
Yeah.
You didn't hear anything for the last half an hour. So now you're not going to be able to give us an answer because you don't even know where we're at.
That's correct.
You know?
Well, and we can't get any informed answer because we don't have facts.
Right, right. But if you were there listening to that half an hour, you might have a lot better idea to give us.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, that really is an advantage to having the streamed and report, oh, sorry.
Maybe we're, maybe we're driving down the wrong path. We took the fork to the right where you guys could have said, well, you guys should fork to the left.
Stop the train.
Right street.
Yeah, or drive straight, drive straight.
Tree right there, yeah.
Did you have any questions?
You know what? From what they've said and the questions that our commissioners have asked, all my questions have been answered several times actually, so.
I have one more thing before Tim.
I don't have anything anyway.
I thought I'd ask.
Um, so could you expand on your experience with Michigan drain code?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Laura.
I was going to say, Mark Kerner in our Lansing office is a drain code expert. So as I said, we have kind of the generalist and specialist and he is, he is the drain code expert in our firm. So we bring him in as needed on that. We do represent a lot of what I call, you know, county-related entities like drain commissions, road commissions, health departments, you know, apportionment commissions. So, you know, as those issues come up, we can loop somebody in. Zoom makes that easy as well. The fact that we have a couple of offices is not an impediment because we can get somebody on a Zoom call just as quickly as we can get them on the phone.
Yeah, that was our dilemma. We didn't know who to bring.
Yeah.
We didn't bring our labor lawyers because we, how, your contracts are all negotiated and so you're good for three years on the contracts. So how often you're going to have a labor issue pop up in the next three years is probably remote. So we told those guys, stay home. You know, hopefully it's remote, right?
Yes.
But, but the people that we brought, I mean, primarily you're going to have ordinance issues, you're going to have zoning issues, you're going to have taxing issues, you're going to have village issues. Those are the areas where you're going to have most of your questions or most of your immediate need for legal services. And so that's why we picked who we picked today. Had we known that there was an issue concerning the drain commissioner or drain work in general, then we would have had Mark Kerner pop and we still could have got him here in probably 20 seconds. But that's the advantage, I think, to having nearly 100 lawyers in our firm, all of which have a specialty. If you ask me a drain code issue, I'll give you one, but you would not like the answer. I'm asking you to offer an opinion, as you probably doubt, but it's not the one you want to hear. It's maybe going to your orthodontist to get your hearing checked. I mean, happy to give you an opinion, which you can't hear, but he probably can't tell you how to fix it, so.
It's another hot topic. Did you want to expand on that or no?
Just, I guess, who you have that has drain code?
Be Mark Kerner.
Mark Kerner?
Mark Kerner, yeah. And I think, does he, I think he handles Clint County Drain Commissioners work and Jackson, I think he does work, no, he doesn't do work for Jackson County Drain Commissioner, does he? I'm not exactly sure which commissioners he works with, but it's a, it's a bigger rate and stay wide. And again, that's a very specific area of the law that you call him, he knows the answer. You call us, we can find you the answer. But here's where you avoid the unnecessary expenditure of legal fees for us to go research it when we walk down the hall and go, hey, what's the answer to this issue?
I don't, I don't think, and jump in if I'm, I don't think that we're in our representation of counties that we've had something that we don't have somebody that can handle, you know.
That's correct to my knowledge, both with our smaller counties and large counties like Muskegon. And you know, a lot of unique issues come up and we've been able to handle everything in-house.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they have like transportation authority issues. We've got, Mark is our transportation authority expert. I, I represent two libraries in your county. I do library law. There's, there's a lot of like niche expertise we also have that can become helpful with counties.
In this county, you said?
Yep.
Okay.
West Branch.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions?
Well, just you touch on your ideas of how you're going to communicate with us, I mean, with the, with the key holders and the shareholders in the, in our county. Just the one, maybe.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, so I think I understood the question. So what we find to be ineffective is a shotgun approach, where just any one of you can call without permission from a key person within the county so that we get, you know, you call me, you call me and you call me and you all have a different question on the exact same issue, but none of you know the answer because you got an answer, you got an answer, you got an answer. And then you come into the meeting and everybody says, well, Foster Swift told us, yes, no, Foster Swift told me that. So what we try to do is we have a key person to be that contact and then you run through them. Now, there are issues where a commissioner may say, look, I want to talk to the lawyer. All I want is the permission to talk to the lawyer. And I don't want to have a conversation with Tim as to what I want to talk to him about. I just want to have a personal conversation with him. And Tim says, that's fine if Tim's your contact person and that call is made and we answer it. But what we do not do, because we don't work for any one person, you know, pick allegiances. We give you the law and you make the decisions, but we make sure that everybody knows after that conversation takes place, unless it's something really personal that doesn't have anything to do with the county and then we wouldn't be charging the county, but.
Well, we also want to make sure, because we represent the county as a whole. We don't represent individual commissioners. And so one of our other challenges that we also want to make sure is that we're representing the majority interest. So, you know, some, you know, a lot of times your decisions are, are unanimous. Sometimes there's a split and a controversy and we have to, we just want to make sure that our communication lines are such that we understand who we're, who we're supposed to be reporting to. And a lot of that is dictated by you. You guys as a, as a, as a board might say, only through, you know, the administrator or board chair, whoever you guys decide, that's, that can be up to you. If you want our input on it, we'd be happy to do that. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're representing the county, which is our client and the majority interest in that. So that's.
So that's the best way for you to control your own legal cost.
We have a policy on that.
Yeah, and counties, counties differ from cities and townships and things. We have, we share responsibilities with other elected officials, not just commissioners.
Right, you've got, you've got the prosecutor's office and sheriff's department too, and you've got a lot of different entities and, you know, we, we work with all of those within.
You know, I understand, work with them.
Yeah.
And how does the communication flow then?
Well, typically, and Laura can jump in too, like for example, you know, I just had a joint meeting, for example, with this, with the county administrator and the prosecutor's office because we're figuring out how they wanted to handle their FOIAs and those types of things. And so we have those joint meetings to make sure everybody's on the same page as well, because we don't want what problems that way. So that's just one example, Laura, I don't know.
Yeah, typically the county administrator will be the gatekeeper, even with, for example, a county clerk, register of deeds or others who have questions for county corporation council. And that's the way they've chosen to do it and it tends to work well because I don't think in those cases, the county administrator saying, no, you can't. It's more a matter of coordinating it so that everybody's on the same page and it's done as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible. So the county administrator might gather questions and information and then send it to me and I'll get back directly with him and then he disperses the information. Or as I mentioned, I just had a video call this week with a lot of elected officials and stakeholders in a county. And that was coordinated by the county administrator where he said to me, can you make yourself available for a meeting today? I said, of course. And he, his office put together the Zoom and we jumped on it. So that's been a good way in my experience. It's perhaps not the only way, but it has worked well. And then when commissioners have had legal questions, either those come through the county administrator, again, kind of in a gatekeeper capacity, or sometimes there will be actually a motion at a, at a county board meeting to direct corporation council to do certain research or look into certain issues, particularly where there may be some cost to it. So if it's an issue where, where the county thinks, you know, this might, this might cost a thousand dollars, we want to make sure a majority of the county or commissioners are, are okay with that, then they'll do it as an official kind of county action. So so you're right, the issues facing counties are different than those facing cities and townships. And although we represent both, I'm very familiar with, with the differences between them.
Our policy states it's through you.
Right, that would be the usual.
It's either you, I very rarely call Greg. When I call him, you know about it.
That, that's a, it's a good, it's a good, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think we got, I think you guys did a very good job.
Well, thank you for inviting.
Thanks for the opportunity. We really appreciate it.
Very much. Thank you.
These are a little bit dated because the original proposal that we gave you, there's not a big significant change in it, but it's a nice fresh copy.
So Tim will be in contact with you guys.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next we have Rebecca Younger, Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. Hi.
Hi, good morning. Thank you.
How are you?
I will not be that long.
Do you need to go to law school?
I could be long-winded. Oh, but thank you for having me. So as the executive director of the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center, I appreciate the opportunity to come on a yearly basis and give you an update. I think we missed last year with everything going on. There's been a lot of exciting things happening. As you know, our mission is to reduce the trauma of child abuse and neglect by providing prevention, intervention and advocacy. So we appreciate, we're celebrating our eighth year, which is amazing. I just hired another therapist, which will give me three full-time therapists. With our forensic interviewer, our program coordinator, we have a full medical program. We have nurses on call, we have advocates on call that respond 24/7 to any sexual assault, child or adult who needs those services within, you know, the immediate timeframe. We do non-acute exams at our center. So we'll have a staff of 10. So in eight years, you know, we have grown, expand. We continue to provide those services to all of Ogleman County families. We work closely with the sheriff's department, with West Branch PD and with MSP. Today I wanted to talk a little bit about how what we are doing is helping your community and saving you money. So when I first, you know, came, you know, to Northern Michigan from Grand Rapids and opened the center eight years ago, that was our goal, you know, was really the services that we can provide for the community and make sure that we are providing the best services for kids when there's allegations of child abuse and neglect. We recently had a little girl, she came to the center a few months ago, had disclosed to her mom, she didn't want to go to a family function. And through a little tender tantrum, through a fit, she was bound and determined not to go to this family function. So mom sat down and talked with her and had a heart-to-heart and the little girl disclosed, every time they go to these family functions, there's an older cousin there who plays a touching game with her, has told her for years not to tell. She's kept it a secret and never disclosed. And finally, she did. This older cousin was 10. So mom reports it. We get that little girl into the interview. She comes to the interview. She discloses that abuse, discloses how this older cousin is touching her, telling her to keep it a secret and how she wants it to stop. So we interview her, we bring our team. Every case, we work with law enforcement, if we have to work with protective services. We have our whole multi-disciplinary team that handles these cases to make sure that we're providing the best services possible. So then we decided as a team with consulting, we always consult with our prosecutor's office. If we ever start, typically we don't interview offenders. This is the victims that's coming through our center. Here we have a 10-year-old juvenile offender. So we consult with our prosecutor, made the decision, we're going to bring that 10-year-old into the center, interview him, what is going on with this 10-year-old? So the prosecutor had already determined, you know, more than likely, we're not going to prosecute a 10-year-old. What can we do to get that child the help they need? So we did. We bring that 10-year-old in, we work together as a team, law enforcement's there. 10-year-old comes in scared, afraid, frightened. Can you imagine what that experience would have been like for that 10-year-old? To have to go down to the police department and talk to officer in uniform and, and have that experience. At our center, you know, he was able to be interviewed by our forensic interviewer in a room by himself. Law enforcement observes from another room. He broke down, he cried, he admitted to everything that he had done to his cousin and started talking about how he had found pornography and was viewing a lot of pornography, never disclosed that he was sexually abused himself. Talked about how he knew it was wrong and wanted help. Think about that experience. If that 10-year-old would have not gotten the help he needed, where would that 10-year-old be in two, three years? That behavior is going to continue. That behavior is still going to start. That 11, 12, 13-year-old then is going to be petitioned to juvenile court, get involved in your juvenile court system, cost you money through juvenile court, through your childcare funds and cost us how much money in the future. Think of that little girl who disclosed being touched. If she doesn't get the help that she needs, what do we see our teenage girls in juvenile court? How many of these teenage girls, teenage pregnancy, depression, suicide, drug and alcohol? And how many of them have a history of sexual abuse that never got the help they needed? So as we continue at the Children's Assessment Center, that's our passion and our mission. Let's get the kids the help that they need. We can prevent all those juvenile delinquents. Get them the help so they can grow up, live in your community, live in your society as healthy kids. The past year, we have provided, well, and actually only a year to date, so we still got a month left in December already. But we had had 62 kids from Ogleman County come through the Children's Assessment Center. That's more than one a week that these kids are coming to the center that we're getting referrals on. We have provided 156 therapy sessions to these kids. So these kids are getting the help that they need. We can help them get through their trauma. My therapists are trained in cognitive behavioral therapy, EMDR. They do play therapy. There's another technique, it's called SMART therapy, which is a sensory motor regulation therapy. So our therapists get the best training to provide these services. We had 371 sessions of advocacy. I have a family advocate who meets with the families, who meets with the guardians, who provides the services and helps support these families through that process. So she is talking with these families and providing those services. We had five kids that reached that level. They had to come back to us for non-acute exams and had to receive a medical exam. Four came to us on acute cases. So these are kids that are disclosing that they were assaulted within five days. So these are kids that are disclosing that they were assaulted within five days. 120 hours is our protocol for an acute exam. In September, we had nine same exams, which is the sexual assault same exam. One was an adult. Eight of those were 18 and under that were coming to us on sexual assaults. Year to date, four of those offenders have already applied to their offenses. So they're already being sentenced, they're going through the court systems, so we're getting those offenders off the streets. So they're not going to be out there abusing more kids in Ogumma County. So with your continued support, we can continue to provide these services, we assist these victims in here, the healing process. And what we want to do and work with you to create a community where abusing kids is not acceptable. And we hope that's, that's the mission, our passion, and what we want to communicate to you. The last few years, oh.
I have goodies.
Goodies.
So the last few years have been very challenging. So here's a little treat to help you get through the day. We all know with COVID, things have, things have been tough. It's been tough on our kids. It's been tough for all of us in the castles around.
It's not a check at all.
See what's inside.
Wait for Christmas.
So. With COVID, we have seen an increase in child abuse cases. What we have also seen is an increase in the severity of our cases. My staff has not, they, they're talking to me on a regular basis about how difficult these cases are because of the severity. We went a full year almost with these kids not having anybody to disclose to. They weren't in school, they weren't going to doctors, they weren't going to daycare. So who are they talking to, you know? So we went, you know, a while where kids are isolated and continue to be endangered. So we continue now to see the aftereffect of that, the aftereffects. With our pandemic shutdown, fundraising has been difficult. We're seeing a decrease in just our community support. People are out of work, people aren't working. They don't have the extra funding to support nonprofits. We're lucky if we can do fundraising events, depending on, you know, the time of year and what restrictions we're under. We're getting back into that, but we have seen a decrease in our community support. Our biggest funding source is VOPA. So VOPA is a victim of a crime act, and that has seen a 70% decrease in the last few years of the funds. Partly, it's the way that funding is set up, and if you're familiar with that funding source, VOPA funds get contributed into that fund when there's been a trial. Someone goes to trial, they're found guilty, they have to pay those fines and fees, that goes into the VOPA fund. We have been fighting for years to expand that to not to only a trial, but when someone pleads. And especially the last two years, our prosecutors were under a lot of pressure to accept pleas and because we didn't want people in jail. And so the more that we were accepting pleas and people paying those fines and fees, that money was not going into the VOPA funds that support CACs. We have about 35 children's advocacy centers in Michigan, and that's our biggest funding source. And July, on July 20th, the president did sign, it's called the VOPA fix. So the VOPA fix is going to help our funding. So it will restore that money that was allocated. So what they did is they opened up that funding source, saying, if you're going to court, whether you plead, whether you're, go to trial, no matter what, and you have those fines and fees, that money now will go into VOPA. It's going to take three to five years, though, for us to be able to see that funding. I see you have on your agenda the American Rescue Plan. That does allow you to use those funds for agencies that provide mental health services. Mental health is a huge area that the American Rescue Plan, we haven't asked into our governor to help our state chapter. I think we asked for about $10 million of ARP funds from the state that would help support all those 35 centers. I have commitments already from Ross Common and IASCO that they're using ARP funds to help with the allocations that the county's giving to the center because of our mental health services that we provide for the kids. I have asked, I previously have asked all the commissioners to allocate $3,000 to the center to help support our services. I did ask, I am putting in a request for the $5,000. Like I said, we have another therapist who is starting. She's starting, actually, April, or December 13th. So that's going to provide better services for our kids, and we're going to add a day up to IASCO. We see a lot of Ogumma County kids go to IASCO for services. So it's going to give options, the families in Ogumma County, two options, to go to Ross Common or to IASCO to get services. We help, you know, a lot of this funding that we get from our commissioners and then from the counties is to really to make sure that we're getting our staff to the best training possible, that we're providing gas cards to the families so they can get back and forth, that we're providing the counseling services, or the counseling tools and equipment that our therapists need to be able to provide the best services possible. So I do have the allocation. So there's the contractor, the agreement for 2022 that you can look over. If you need any more information in regards to, I know every county's doing their ARP funds a little different. I've met with some individual committees and I submitted proposals. So I'm not sure how you are reviewing your ARP funds, but I'd be more than happy to talk with you more about that.
Or isn't formally set up a process yet.
Okay.
But it's part of what we talk about today.
I saw that on the agenda, I thought, perfect timing. Yeah, I had, because I met with both Ross Common and IASCO have smaller committees that I've met with, so.
So this is $3,000, Ben Giddy, $3,000. So this is just a continuation and you're asking for.
For another.
Right?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I got that clear. So we need that on for resolution the next, next week?
Yes.
Any questions for?
Where are your services?
So we are.
I'm aware of.
Oh, you're aware. I thought you said where, like, yeah.
No, no.
Thank you. Yeah.
Very aware of it. I know friends of mine that have asked to use your services. And, and it's, it was, uh, very successful, so.
We, we hope we may, we, we hope in long-term, making a difference and have that vision that hopefully our numbers will go down.
We're definitely making a difference.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, what's your opinion on our response to COVID, the pandemic, with kids 18 and under, as far as the, the effect that it's had on suicide and depression?
It has completely increased it, yes. Our kids, we're seeing even the kids coming in for counseling. Not only the trauma of the sexual abuse that they've experienced, you know, 85% of our cases are sexual abuse. Just the isolation and the struggles in school and that communication with their friends and the sporting events. A lot of times, our therapists are working on those issues and helping them get through how they're feeling in regards to everything that's happened these last two years before they're even starting to get into the issues of their abuse. So, yeah, it has had a huge impact. We are seeing our kids, I, probably about 10% of our interviews were probably ending in a suicide assessment, which we did not do before COVID. You know, we would have, we train all of our, our interviewers, if they're in the middle of that interview and a child starts making any kind of comments or statements, you know, that they jump right into a suicide assessment. And we would do a few, you know, here and there, and that, we're seeing that more common. I got a call last night from the undersheriff in Ross Common, that they were dealing with a 15-year-old suicide call, and it was a girl that had just been to the center the day before. So a huge increase.
But you think it's, um, is there any, any other concerns besides isolation and sexual abuse?
You know, I, I think that, you know, there's a lot of factors, you know, I drug, then alcohol has, you know, the economy, you know, and parents not, you know, working and not being able to afford daycare, they can't even get to daycare. So there's a lot of factors, I think, that take that into effect. And we have seen, you know, an increase too, you know, I know, talking with our jail administrators too, with, you know, people, drugs and alcohol, and then, you know, kids being neglected and that physical abuse. And I think physical abuse rises when there's a lot of stress in the home. You know, parents are on, you know, they get on their last whim. And so, you know, we work closely with protective services also, you know, making sure that we're trying to get on the families that the support they need. And that's, you know, the 371 sessions of advocacy, that's what my family advocate is doing, is, you know, helping to support these families so then they can support the kids in their home.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great day. Enjoy your treats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, feel free to let me know.
I might get into yours.
Tracy, we have Brent Goatner related to the county clerk, they need to adjustments for girls.
What?
The carpet wasn't enough.
The carpet wasn't enough.
Carpet didn't do payroll this time.
Yeah, yeah. I can't get Greg Scott to come in and, and work for my girls.
I'd follow things all up. He wouldn't want me.
No, so what I'm asking for is Tracy and Diana, just those two positions, to get bumped up to 40 hours just because the workload that those two specifically, they need more hours. We've always needed more hours for those two. And instead of coming to you guys every couple of months, asking for a couple of weeks with the additional, I'm asking if we can just make those two until the end of the fiscal year, is that what? Is that, I.
Ten more months.
Well, you told me at time why.
Well, that would be certainly the cleanest.
Yeah.
But if this was a temporary workload increase or something like that, it were.
It's, it's not temporary. They, they, their workload warrants 40 hours.
So right now, they're working 36? Okay. So what? The final extract, like what are.
Just eight-hour days instead of seven-hour days, just for those two.
I, I can just, I'm a smip, but at least in Tracy's case, we had a, what you call it, Zoom meeting yesterday with our Nova Time group and building the platform, if you will, so that it works the way we really want it to work. Has no question put additional workload on Tracy because she's having to deal with this, helping construct this new thing while we still have to continue to run the operation with current payroll the way it is and everything else is going on. Her, her participation in that is absolutely critical. If she doesn't understand the system, we're in a world of hurt, particularly at this stage, but it's being built. And I know this is going to go on at least through February, in addition to whatever else the clerk's office is experiencing. So there's definitely, if there was any question of justification for doing this, it's there. And in Tracy's case, it is, and I totally get this, is easier to do some of that more technical data entry and everything that goes on with it, when you're not doing it, trying to deal with clients or clients, the public coming in, we need services as well. So for her to have the extra time after the office closes its doors, to just simply focus on that, definitely, I think, would help her in at least in an efficiency manner, getting this, this other work accomplished as well, while yet not cutting services to the public coming in, needing those services. So this, my, my two cents, it's definitely been a, nothing that surprises us, but definitely been an increase in the workload, at least at the front end of getting this system in place. And we are all going to benefit greatly from it, what it is in place.
Yeah, she's had a lot of positive things to say about it. It's just getting to the point where we can function with it.
What about Diana's workload? What's, what's increased there?
She, well, she's doing some things to, to fill in, to help Tracy when she's.
Okay, that's the increase.
Well, she's, she always has a lot of work to do.
Does she work more hours currently? Does she not get her work?
Diana.
Yeah, so there's more work for her to do.
There's more work than, there's more work for her than 35 hours a week. When we lost the full-time position, how many years ago was that? Five? Four? Shortly before me. Yeah, so when they lost that full-time position, she took on a greater workload. It's always been there. The workload has always been there, but she's just been trying to get as much done as she can in 35 hours. And she, it's justifiable for her to be here for 40 hours to get everything done she needs to get done. And then, like I said, helping fill in with what Tracy can't get done in terms of the financial stuff.
It's a huge asset for your department. I mean, Tracy's done amazing jobs. She had
Yeah.
things to fill and has done very well. Diana's always answered the questions and is a great resource.
Yeah, yeah.
What's Nova's up and running? Will, will be a time saver?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Really reduce the amount of time that needs to be spent on Payroll Monday, entering
Yeah.
numbers, taking time sheets, logging them in. That step will be gone.
Yeah.
Because it'll all already be there, and again, assuming, and I'm very confident we'll get there in terms of building all the nuances into the system. Literally, everything will be added up before it gets there. The system will do it. So what Tracy needs to do now is push the button to distribute the checks and it's going to be done. I said to say there won't be a manual tweak here or there, but it'll be nothing like the time she has to spend now.
Right.
I'm fine with even, like, if we can just, until February, March, until that's up and running and then reassess it to see how much, that's perfect. That would be amazing. That would be huge for my.
Three months, three months and we reassess.
How about five?
Very confident works and it seems difficult to explain, and we're just asking for an explanation so that we have an idea. We don't know what your office does or.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking, because, because I don't think three is enough, because it's going to take us.
Time to work the bugs out.
At least two, just to get it running.
February versus.
And then a month later won't be enough assessment time.
Right. I mean, realistically, that's only two payrolls.
Right.
Okay, so February versus when we're live with it.
And, and that'll be gradual, so we'll, you know, add some departments upfront. Immediately, we actually just went over this yesterday, and we'll have our meeting next week. I'll have a schedule to show you, so you can see all this. So we'll do some of the apartments, particularly, we're looking at this floor in the, in the county building because the employees, you either A, non-union, or B, they're steelworkers. So it's going to be easy, just in terms of organizing in our minds, what we're doing with all the, you know, vacation days and the sick accumulations and so on. Likely then roll that out in February. February, while we're going to go live with it, will also be our testing. So we'll know whether the system is working or not, where we're going to have our problems before we bring on the jail and the sheriff's office. A lot more nuance to it, a lot more people, but if we can get a lot of those bugs worked out with the smaller group first, it'll be ready to go. So probably sometime in March or April, we'll do the same thing with that group, roll it out, do testing while we're doing it live, so there'll probably be dual systems, just to make sure everybody gets paid. But nevertheless, roll it out, and then finally, we'll do the core group after that, we'll have everybody in place. So, but you'll see a more detailed layout of that.
If that's, if that's pretty much a projected schedule, I'd say the end of June. That's, that's the third, end of the third quarter. It'll be seven months completely, including December, because it's only the second day. So that puts us the end of the quarter, the end of that particular quarter. Yeah, I think that's a decent anniversary. If you're going to, if you're going to wait to roll into, roll into court, say in late April, May, first of May, then that gives you another.
Depends on how many bugs.
Yeah.
And that's why you can always come back if, if we have a problem. Add it again. I'll say this, but Nova Time shared about this yesterday, it was, and their experience in creating these is that we don't end up extending the time. We end up, I can't get the right wording right on this. Rather than say doing the sheriff's office and jail in April, we may do it in March, because we're that much further ahead. And he said, that's more likely the scenario, but if you went to June 30, that definitely will cover what we've discussed.
That's what I would propose, June 30, the end of June, it gives it a quarter. I don't, I don't think a permanent change right now is the.
No, that's not, no. And then.
We got this new system coming out. I'm seeing, I'm already seeing the BSNA, uh, time savings already.
Positive effects of that, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of positive stuff there. I, Tracy did the report for me just the other day, and it was just minutes. I mean, you know. Yeah. A lot of positive stuff there. I, I, Tracy did the report for me just the other day and it was just minutes. I mean, you know, I mean, I asked her, it didn't have to be today. I mean, oh, no, right. Hey, went right over, get it? And it's sprinting in the other room, you know? And, and, uh, and I've seen other things like that. So I think Nova's going to do the same thing for us. So a temporary fix. I, and I understand you got, you got, you got two young ladies in there that are, are new to a lot of the systems. Uh, you're new to the system, uh.
But I'm still, still doing my old job too. Part of it, still doing several, but and honestly, the beginning of the year, our office, we see an influx in court cases with, after the new year unfortunately comes divorces, a lot of them, which that's a bigger workload for everybody, but it just, if they could have more hours to work on the stuff they need to work on, because we're going to be in court more, it would just be helpful.
Anything? Okay. Can you put that on for resolution? Thank you. Have a note, Rick?
No.
Mr. Roger, come on up. Corrections Lieutenant related to job descriptions.
All right.
Morning, guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Here we go. Your turn. Um, you should have the job descriptions that we prepared, um, for Corrections Officer slash Cook, Corrections Officer slash Administrative Secretary. Um, we put those together with the job descriptions of both areas of control. It would be beneficial to the county if we could get to that, some bank of liability. Everybody in there would be under the same, um, classification. Corrections Officer could work in the, uh, the Administrative Secretary could work in the back. The cooks could work in the back. The cooks would be trained to deal with inmates and handle inmates as the Corrections Officer in a kitchen setting. That's pretty important. Uh, we had an incident not too long ago, around, when we had a couple of trustees get into an argument that could have got into a physical altercation. Well, the cook steps back because she doesn't know what to do and she's not trained to know what to do. She's trained to hit the button and then people respond. Um, with the Corrections Officer, it probably would have been handled within moments by you shut up, you shut off, both of you sit down. I mean, and it works that way. If, if you've worked, been in there, if you've got a good Corrections Officer, they got very good communication skills and the inmates know who can handle their business and who can't. They pick you apart. Liability wise, it makes sense because you have somebody in there trained all the time that deals with inmates all the time.
So from now on, you want to hire only, only this particular type of person, Corrections Officers, staff cook?
Not.
There won't be any more just cooks?
That would be the ideal thing to happen. As it, as we have it right now, the way we're set up, we have, we have one cook that's going to retire, uh, in December. We have one that's there. Who we know is not here. She's off.
Right.
Um, our position and, and, you know, we got to go through the, the process and, and tell she thinks.
When she comes back now, do we have a job description for her?
There is, there is a cook's job description. It's the same as the one that's in the, the Corrections Officers thing, but it doesn't have the Corrections Officer part.
Do we have one?
But it hasn't been formally adopted in this new format.
No. Oh, okay.
Still have to create the individual. There's still going to be an independent.
Look on your face, uh, uh, kind of surprised when you said you had one.
No, I, there are certain things that are built in the SOP, but unlike the Sheriff's Office SOPs that has
Okay.
lieutenants and deputies.
All right.
That's not in the jail SOP, so we would have to create.
Just a cook.
Just a cook.
Yeah, correct. That's why, that's why I ask, if you're not going to have just a cook anymore, then we wouldn't need one, but.
If she comes back.
She comes, when she comes.
When she comes back, I'm sorry.
She comes back, then yeah, we need a job description. That'd be the same thing.
Correct.
And same thing for the Administrative Secretary. If you, yeah, you're only an Administrative Secretary that has no correction duties, we need a job description for that also. Correct. The ideal, the ideal thing in, in, in long term would be to get them to all the Corrections Officers slash Cook, Corrections Officers slash Administrative Secretary. Yeah. In the, in the future.
Right.
Is the end plan, what you want to get. That way, everybody in that building is trained, handling mates and emergency inmates and all that.
Makes sense to me. But, but in the short term.
Correct.
We need job descriptions for, if that's what they are now, we need it now.
Because while we're creating, we, we get back and just do the individual cook. Want to bring that one?
Yeah, yeah. Because this has already bit us, not in your department, but in other departments, this lack of job descriptions. Correct.
This position is replacing his wife, correct?
Correct. When she retires, correct. But need to hire one for the other, or it's going to just create tons of overtime. That's where I'm having an issue right now. I've been coming, I work weekends, seven days.
So what happens when, I'm sorry, let me interrupt, but what happens when his, his wife retires in December? So you're going to have to pull, are you, are you then substituting that position with a, an, another cook? Right now you have a cook off and you have a Corrections Officer that's acting as a, as a cook?
Correct.
So what's the plan December twenty-fifth? I think is what you said was when your wife retires, right?
Last day of the payroll, yeah. Twenty-fifth, an officer that's, that's, um, retired MDOC that's, that did food service in his career, that'll be running that kitchen on this shift. He's training to do it right now. And I'll have another officer that'll be working on the other shift.
So you're going to have two Corrections Officers in there, working as a cook?
Correct.
After December twenty-fifth?
Correct. If this is approved, not, then we'll have to start the process of trying to find cooks to hire under, um, the way they've always been civilians.
You've run out of time to train.
Yeah.
Well, the force of this particular person that's got MDOC training and experience is a cook. I mean, I'm just, you know, I don't see, I don't see a hurdle not passing these job descriptions, but he could still be tired as a cook, just, and then all of his training would be just additional thing that, you know what I mean? You're saying.
Um, he's an officer.
Oh, he's working for you now?
Absolutely. He was an officer with MDOC.
Okay.
Officer cook. It's the one, it's, it's, they're, they're combined. I'm not sure how they did their certi- certification with the state. He's a certified Corrections Officer with the county now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Twenty plus years.
He's from the state. He worked at Sandish, right?
Yeah, Stan's Max.
Oh, that's.
Yeah. It makes, it makes a transition. Yes. It makes a transition. Really well for us because he's got all that experience in there that he can relay on.
Yeah.
Time with the other one.
So will all of these officers that are going to go into this job description, um, all have to go through a food safety program?
There's, I, I put in the job description, there's what they call serve safe. That within six months of taking this, they're going to have to pass a serve safe test. They can do it online. Obviously, we have to pay for it. It, yeah, I think it's a hundred and forty-nine dollars. And that's to be a serve safe instructor, not just to pass serve safe, be an instructor. That way, they can teach the inmates who are working in the kitchen to serve safe. And if those inmates want to, want to get a serve safe certificate and are willing to pay for it, he can actually train them and give them the test of that. So when they leave, they could leave with a, a serve safe certificate. That process down there, I haven't got into that real in depth, but that's what the, the plan is. We lost a lot of programs with, uh, PA five eleven. That's the program we can do inside there.
About Michigan Works, could they help pay for that?
I've already got a call into Michigan Works for some, um.
You'd think they'd pay for trainings like that.
They, they very well might.
They do.
I do, I do have a call in too, but they changed me. A couple of different people have left there now. Um, I'm waiting for a callback from the lady, not waiting for that, but for Academy funding.
Mary Beebe's not with Michigan Work?
Nope, she left.
She's what I, I didn't know that.
Yeah, the EC and, uh, Michigan Works, she left. So there's an open position there, but, um, I have a real good rapport with Mark, uh, for Dan. He's the director. He's a president.
Trying to think of the name they gave me. There's another lady.
Bachelor there?
Yep, that's it. She's going to be reaching back out to me on the funding, not only for that, but for Academy funding to try to help process.
I know Mary was looking into it when, uh, the sheriff had briefly talked to her. I just want to make sure that, that when this individual hopefully comes back from, uh, uh, and, and I'm an advocate for her right, right this second, um, comes back from FMLA lead, that she's going to have a position.
Absolutely.
Um, and that she's not going to be forced to go get some, uh, become a Corrections Officer.
No.
You guys will bring her back in until she retires and then, okay.
Yes, absolutely. I wouldn't do that to anybody.
I.
No.
Understand, I just, uh.
Yep. Well, I'm clear.
Questions? I was asked, um, it, uh, I brought this up last meeting, I think at the village there, and I was asked, they were talking from a federal, uh, level, because I had told them that you came to us and, and this was something that you had discussed, um, why the inmates don't do the cooking. Apparently, this gentleman, uh, that had brought this up to me, uh, I, I don't, he knew somebody that cooked at the federal, uh, apparently federal inmates do their cooking. I, I said, I'm assuming it's your guys' turnover rate is, is faster than at a federal level and.
Federal or prisons?
Correct, right.
So they're, they might be there for years.
Right, that's.
We're, we're a temporary holding facility.
That was my explanation. Is there any other explanation that I didn't know about?
That and, and who's going to train them? You get, you're in the same, they're going to be trained now. You got to have somebody to supervise them and train them to do the job. You just, um, you can't just pull them out of the back, say, hey, you're cooking spaghetti today. Here you go. But, you know, they got to have that cook there to, they're going to be taught to cook, to cook, to clean, to do dishes, to serve, um, all the safety things you do as far as health reasons for when you serve, when you're dealing with foods, all of that. They're going to be taught that. They're going to be taught that by the cooks. Um, it's a little different than, well, the cooks we have taught them that, teach them that too. This is actually going to be something that we can document, something that's documented. This cook's been trained to teach this. And now they're teaching the inmates that. But yeah, I understand, but even on the state level, they don't do it. They have, they have actually cooks that are, work for the facility and then inmates that actually assist.
My explanation was turnover. That's the only explanation I could come up with.
So why isn't Lily been cooking right along?
Why isn't who? Why?
Has been since we've needed, since we've needed the.
But you've been on it, cook.
Well, he can't be there seven days a week.
Well, how many cooks does it take with the seven days?
Two.
Two.
I want to, but, but the way it's, the way it's done now is, the way, the way it's done in the past or up till now is they work ten-hour shifts. So cook would come in and leave by four-thirty. Um, you'd have one cook working four days and the other one working three.
Okay.
Um.
And then the next week, it's the opposite.
The way, the way that I want to get it to, um, with Corrections Cooks is they work the same as the, the Corrections Officers do now, twelve-hour rotating shifts. So you have a cook come in and work Monday, Tuesday, the next one will work Wednesday, Thursday, the other one will come back Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It gives you twelve hours of coverage, safety and security, same amount of hours. They're working forty, broke up, but the, the security's better. They're searching these inmates as they come into the, into the kitchen. They're searching them as they're leaving and they're, and they're watching them.
Yeah. But I mean, if it took two cooks for, yeah, Sheriff's, the ones there cooking. And Perry's working. I mean, there's your two cooks.
But you're pulling, you're pulling an officer off the floor to do it right now.
So.
That's where the, you're pulling officer off chef.
Are we, are we, okay, so are we? Well, when you came here last, you talked about a shared responsibility. They work both.
Yes, they'd be able to respond to both. They'd be able to work both.
Okay.
They wouldn't be out there though.
Are you right now hiring somebody for Perry's position?
Not yet. But I, I, I need to get the approval to do that.
Oh.
Right now, he's working in there on his days off. And Cheryl, Cheryl's been working a lot of overtime on her days off to cover that vacancy.
I haven't seen her in two months. This has been, how long has the other cook been off now?
Couple of months.
Oh, I like to come right, right here. You knew she was going to be off for quite a while.
Well, initially, I knew she'd be off, but she had planned on coming to work. That was her, her plan was to, to go off and be back to work within a couple of weeks while I've been treated. And, and I've dealt with that before and I had an idea, but I, I wasn't going to.
So what's, then I guess, are you going to want to have three Corrections Officers or cooks, but it's like, well, wait a minute.
Okay.
It's like the third one is almost all the time working corrections, but is a swing person that fills in. I mean, what are you doing on the vacations there?
Well.
These people got vacation.
And, and that, that's where you get into this teaching the inmates to cook. They're not going to be in there by themselves, but another Correction Officer will have to come in with the, the menu set up, read them before the officer leaves on their vacation. He files that menu and he just watches the security for those inmates and they do the cooking and he watches.
But what's a, like she said, the turnover of prisoners, because you don't have anybody stays longer here, right?
Correct. And that's what we're trying to select. We're looking at that now. It's trying to select the people that are there, that are Ogumaw County inmates, that are, are going to be there the longest. And those are the type of people we want to get in the kitchen.
Run out of, the one, you could run out of prisoners that can't cook or want to cook.
You could.
Make them cook.
No, no, you can't make them, but there's a benefit to them, um, for those that get trustee time.
I mean, you could get to a point where you don't have somebody that wants to cook.
Yeah, part of, part of it right now, Craig, is, okay, Cheryl's in there. She has females come down and help her.
Yeah.
There's only what, ten females in the jail?
Right.
It's not a very minimal, select few that they can take down there. They get male officers in there. They've got seventy to choose from.
Well, yeah, I get it, but.
It's definitely going to be, it's definitely going to help.
I don't want to, I'm going to, I'm trying to be proactive here and maybe have another Corrections Person that's trained and serve safe, ready to cook and be that swing, that swing person.
Well, I think he wants to do that. I think he's going to have that.
But that'd be a third, what I'm talking about, not, not tape.
But he's, the current, correct me if I'm wrong, the current situation will be, you'll have two correction cooks and then the third will come back from the league. So you'll have the three to rotate. And then.
Well, that's what I'm.
When she retires, gets to a retirement or decides she's no longer going to work, then we could come back and look at a third.
Then you want to look at a third again.
Because with, with what we have now, we would have three.
Yeah, because, you know, with, with time off and vacation and everything else, you got to have a swing.
Correct.
You know, overtime is not a swing.
No.
That's not a overtime to automatically say, oh, we just, we just pay overtime.
No.
No, 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 no.
Well, this do a role. I mean, Corrections Officer slash cook, it'd be easy to have a third person for backup.
If, if there was, what I'm saying is, you know you have the backup.
Right.
So we have the back. Not yet, uh, well, this guy knows how to cook, you know?
Taking the first step. It takes time.
Yeah, it takes.
If you get these two in the position, she comes back, you've got three. And then somewhere down the line, you'll look at.
So.
The replacement for.
They're all, they're all at the third one right now, or you're hiring the third one. I mean, you got Perry.
And the other one is.
We have to hire two. We've got two that, two now that have training in, in kitchen food service that we want to put in there.
Okay.
Is Perry a cook or you just keep saying the name? I don't know.
Yes, he, he, he retired MDOC. He was a cook in MDOC for years. That's.
He's the one from Sandish.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
He's an excellent cook too. He's own restaurant.
Boy, I use, he owns a restaurant downtown over.
You guys are allowed to come over and have lunch with, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so could we possibly just develop some sort of a inmate food certification program so that these inmates have a benefit to going down there and helping out?
That's the program I was talking about, the serve safe.
Serve safe.
Um, but, but I, I, I haven't dug into it deep enough.
You're going to be trained. You're going to actually have a certificate of graduation.
Right, but the, the part of that is I haven't got far enough into it to find out if the inmate has to pay a certain amount to serve safe to have that certificate? Or if once we train our instructors to teach them, if they can provide it at no cost. That part I don't know yet. Because I don't know if that's protected through that company. They'll teach our people to be instructors through that online course, but will, will we be able to issue a certificate? I do not know yet that yet.
Well, I think.
I, they can pay for one, I'm sure, but we're not going to pay for it. If the inmate wants it, if that's what happens to be, they're going to.
Maybe we will.
It's going to save us money.
It saves us money down the road. I mean, sometimes you spend money to save money. It, it sounds screwy, but that's what happens. It's like making money. Sometimes you spend money to make money.
That's my second question is, what kind of an effect is this increased inmate productivity going to have on our current overtime status right now? Will that make it a lot better?
You're talking about in the kitchen?
Yeah.
They cannot cook, cook in the kitchen without supervision in or without a cook in there.
But you have one, you could, you would possibly have one supervisor in there.
At a time.
At a time.
That's what we have now. Yep, that's what we use now. That's all that would be in there at a time.
But if your inmates were doing the cooking, then you wouldn't need a cook, right?
No, you have to have a cook.
So you'd have to only have one then?
Right. That's what we have now. We have one cook and then we have trustees. You cannot put inmates in the kitchen to cook for other inmates without supervision.
So you're not going to change the amount of people we have in the kitchen, then?
Not employees, no. Employees. But we are going to change the number of trustees. But we are gonna change the number of trustees to three.
Uh, benefits to this, you know, I mean, when we go for, if we go for a grant. Or we go for a special program, if, I think, I, yeah, I gotta think that if we have programs about rehabilitation. That's gonna earn us points for grant money and things like that. If, here's a great way to do it.
This also saves on housing costs, cause inmates that work in the kitchen get what they call trustee time, so they're not, they're not incarcerated as long as they would have been.
Okay, so.
That's the benefit.
If I spend a little money, get them a safe serve. And, and then, and they end up not staying as long, well, then we're, save the money we just spent. Now it's a wash, now we're not spending money, we're saving money.
I would think that'd be, I mean, it sounds great, I would think that'd be quite a process.
And I'll tell you what.
Get that certification to do that.
I frequent a thing, restaurants around here and not look back, fucks.
Well, and, and if you look at the population.
That helps them get a job and not have to come back.
Yeah, right, if you look at, if you look at the population of inmates who have been incarcerated for felonies, the, the major workforce out there that the, the jobs that they do is in food service.
Yeah.
It's hard to find jobs.
This is hu, that's huge with Michigan Works, every month they give us a, a report on, uh, reenrollment, uh, release programs. Uh, Michigan Works is huge into this, so I'm sure that you guys could probably partner with them if that's something you're interested in.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That's gonna be big with them. So I will have Mark contact you.
Right, sounds good. And start thinking about any other projects, I don't know if there's a car wash.
Well, we, we have our, we have our feeling, there you go, we have our inmate work crew, but we can't do it because of COVID right now.
Thank your success, that's what I was looking for.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For a discussion items legal services, Tim.
I've heard the, the two firms that have come in, obviously we have the experience with Foley and Mansfield. Uh, so this is the part where you all get to discuss what you wanna do moving forward.
Can I facilitate that?
Do they have a third coming?
No, that third one, um. I'm forgetting the name of the firm already, the attorney that would have been assigned to us left the firm. Since these proposals were presented.
Okay.
And there, there was a range depending on the individuals. Uh, who were assigned to the county ranging from something very reasonable to something that was very unreasonable. Uh, upwards of thirty, three hundred fifty dollars an hour. And suddenly it wasn't, um, as viable, I guess. Because they were focused.
Foley Mansfield, did they?
Well, they're already in the mix because, you know that, so.
Okay, alright.
Really, they're, they're a choice, you know.
Okay.
No, how did that conversation go with Greg yesterday, you told Greg we were doing this, how did, how did that go?
He was understanding, very professional, um, he just. Said the board knows who we are and what we do and.
Okay.
Trust that that reputation is. Known to everyone.
It's like a phone call.
So, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Mark, you had a question, go ahead.
How much are we paying Foley Mansfield?
For our, one eighty-five an hour.
Five, so we're at one eighty-five and then with. The proposal, yeah, was Cole Stoker and Toski, it was one ninety-five if we didn't go the.
Right.
The option three retainer thing and then with, when it was issued, it was two twenty-five.
Right.
How many hours, I know you did an assessment last, you did an assessment, how many hours we pay Foley in Mansfield or how many hours they build this for, do you recall that?
Right.
Recall it.
Yeah, you said like, their, their hybrid, their hybrid program would be about the same what we, we.
Which would've been about the same.
Cool, right.
I wanted to see what it was to the two twenty-five.
Yeah. Well, wouldn't it forty-eight? Forty-eight something and.
Right, it was forty-eight for the hybrid. Retainer, I guess.
Right.
Uh, and just to clarify what the retainer covered, it literally is everything. Short of some form of litigation, so where the additional charge would come in would be for. Court, if they'd litigate something.
Right.
Or if we had a, an arbitration, which the likelihood is greatly reduced now that our contracts are, are all approved. Uh, and then any like a Merck hearing or anything like that that we'd have to have, so if there's a hearing involved or a court appearance that needs to be made. There'd be an extra charge, everything else would be part of that retainer, so. If the clerk had a question about, uh, a function of elections, that would be covered, registered deeds had a question about, uh. I don't know, something that the registered deeds got caught up in, uh, it's part of that retainer. Uh, treasury specifically, and as well, if there was a question about treasurer in there, that would be covered, uh, you know, one, we. Commissioner Vaughn and I talked a little bit about, uh, the zoning amendment coming forward, that would be covered. Uh, and that would be something that, uh, attorneys could be brought in on the ground floor of the initial discussion of a zoning change. Covered, so literally the day-to-day functions covered, the only thing that's not covered is if we take, after we go to the next step with, uh. A litigation or some kind of a hearing.
I took forty-eight thousand divided by one ninety-five.
Well, I just did some quick math.
Yeah.
If we were forty-eight thousand with Foley Mansfield, we're paying them one eighty-five an hour, that's. Just shy of two hundred and sixty hours, come up to fifty-nine something, so I'd say it's two hundred and sixty hours with. Firm that was here today, Foster and Swift, that would work out to fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, so you're looking at another. Ten thousand five hundred dollar differential in cost if we use, save them on hours, basically, so.
Which hopefully we don't, it was a rough year.
Right.
The way I, yeah, the way I figured it, it was about ten percent higher for Cole Stoker and then it was another ten percent higher for these guys.
So right now we got three on the table, we got Foster Swift, we have Cole Stoker and Toski and we have Foley Mansfield, so I'm gonna ask each one of you guys to your opinion. Commissioner Vaughn.
Um, the one that was here today, uh, I was impressed, they seem to have quite a team. Um, that's a, that's a major plus. The guy that was here like a week ago, very personable, I really, I don't know, he seemed to be really. Um. I say upfront and personable, I, uh, I think he'd be real easy to work with. Um, I'd be happy with either or.
So what is your choice?
Um, probably the guy a week ago.
Okay. Commissioner Vaughn.
Um. I was somewhat impressed by the guy last week. Um, but I was a little bit more impressed by the commitment, um, today by Foster Swift. And, uh, seems like they're, uh, they're pretty dedicated, uh. To every one of their clients, that's one of my biggest concerns is, because of our location, are we gonna be taken care of? Properly, and it sounds like they've already got a commitment in this county already. And. I guess unless we. Hear any negative opinions. That's, that's my choice, Foster Swift.
Foster, so, Commissioner Surratt.
I was very impressed with, today with Foster. Swift. I love the fact that they've got, you know, very specific litigators that, you know, are the subject matter experts. Still, I go back to, you know, and I, I go back to my past experience with Cole Stoker and Toski. That's my choice. They've always, my past experience with them, they were great. Tim, I know you worked with them when you were in Agam County, you know, they represent MAC. My choice, my good.
Mr. Scott.
Like her, I mean, Cole Stoker, they have a team, he didn't bring them with him. He, they didn't come on Zoom or anything else, they have, they have everything that the other one has. I think he laid it out better, as far as the communication, he laid out, absolutely, he was right on, right on point. About how he would communicate with everyone, everyone was in the mood. Uh, those, those are things I liked, they did represent counties up here in the north a lot more than I saw today. I like these guys, they're all right, I mean, they're all professionals, I mean, I get that, you know, but Cole Stoker stood right out.
So Jen?
I thought they both did a very nice job, I'm gonna disagree, I, I like the Foster Swift, um, again, their commitment today, um, I like the straight up fee of two twenty-five. There's no what covers what, um, I, I like that, I like that they have specialty, they. Especially with our hot type ticket items going into next year, which is the drainage, the millages. Um, you know, the, the packet they put together, I, I was most impressed, um, by them and also somebody that has ties here. Um, I think is also, uh, another plus, um, obviously, that individual cares, uh, cares about this community and. She, the other one, uh, works for two of the libraries, I think she's at here locally, um, so again, that just shows that they already do have connections to this, uh. County and care about this county, so, uh, my vote is for Foster Swift, um. Uh, again, I like that two twenty-five, we know what it's gonna cost, there's no hidden fees there, we, there's, there shouldn't be any surprises. Um, they took quite a bit of time for three of them to come up here and, and, uh, put together their, uh. Uh, their steel, so that's, that's mine, but.
If, if you didn't wanna go with the retainer, you know, I mean, Cole Stoker and Toski. Option two is the flat one ninety-five an hour.
Correct.
You know, so.
Again, I, I think they, they did a better job presenting, that other gentleman, Ivory, was extremely, extremely, uh, friendly. Um, did a great, did, did a nice job, he already has a rapport with you, um. I don't think a fresh start's a bad, a bad thing either.
I like the retainer thing, I, I like that hybrid retainer thing, I really do, I think, and.
I agree.
And Cole, uh, Cole Toski, you know, he was, he was adamant about being in our meetings. Uh, either, didn't have to be here, we offered him some, and that will work. He was ready to sit in at all the meetings, have, have one of their people sit in at all our meetings. I think that's huge, I mean, that's one thing that we've asked. Mister Man to be in a lot of our meetings and, and he has been in some and then some. He haven't been able to even get a hold of during the meeting.
I, I can say that we, we, we got one right after he commented on that. Wouldn't that receive just another bill on the meetings that he's intended? But, correct?
Uh, that, that was backed out too, when he was brought to his attention, so.
Yeah, yeah, he corrected that.
Right, I, I like the retainer thing, I, I, I don't see much of a reduction. Use of attorneys in, in the next year to, I, I think that. I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have attorneys for more, even more stuff, because we're still playing catch-up. With a lot of stuff that the, the county has not been doing over the last few years. And, uh, uh, so I, I think we're going to, and, and it's like. Tim just explained all the different things that goes under that retainer, I mean, you know, the questions. The questions coming from all the department, uh, the, the, uh, the elected officials, uh, that's all under the retainer. And I don't even know that our elected officials have, 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 uh, utilized all the. All the, uh, information that's available yet from these, so to have that cap, to have that. There, you know, I mean, if, if we overuse it, then they'll come back the next, at the end of the contract term and want our, our staff retainer. And that, that and that would give us a signal too, but I don't, I don't. You know, the way I got it, these guys from. Good enough, there was, uh, uh, you know, you want, you wanna. Want me to call in and sit during your meeting and just listen to everything like the city and Duitt wanted? Well, I'm gonna charge you two twenty-five right from the minute. It starts right to the minute you adjourn, you know, the retainer covers that with Cole Toski. So they'll, they'll sit in the whole meeting, you know, it's covered. If our meeting goes longer, it's covered, goes shorter, it's covered.
So it looks like it's, go ahead.
I just, my, my main concern, retainer, no retainer, whatever, but, um, quality of service is my main concern. And, um, I just got a better feeling of commitment out of them today than from the. Current administration and also the, uh, last one last week. I, I wanna make sure that they have our, our best interests, um, at the top of their list.
I'll go on too, but I just think it's Cole Toski who do that, but.
Especially, we, we have some hot ticket, ticket items in the next year.
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
We're gonna need and, and desire good legal representation.
Absolutely, people who specialize and, and, and both these, both these folks, they got, they got big teams, they got big teams, I mean. I know he, he really expounded on that, but, uh, Mister Laura Strom or whatever his name is, uh. He did, he, he just didn't bring them along, everything else, but. You know.
That's what concerns me, well, yeah, he really wanted the job.
And they could've been on Zoom, they could've did the exact same thing.
Yeah, they could've, they could've, but.
And they did.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, I know they got it. Okay, uh, I, I agree, disagree with.
It was a night meeting versus a day meeting.
Okay, so.
That's where I'm at.
Do we need to make a decision at the next meeting, I mean, it sounds like it's, it's, uh, might as well put that on, you guys, uh, with the retainer, I think that was option three, right?
Yes, option three.
That's where I'm at, Cole Toski looks up.
I mean, I don't think.
Well.
I'm not gonna sway, but there, there's three to two, so yeah, that's fine, go ahead and put that on. Item four B, we have the R B update, you have one, Tim?
I don't have any more input, I don't know if you've heard anything.
I spoke, I went to the road commission meeting last week, uh, they brought it up and we talked about it quite a bit. The state law says that you need to ride to the, to the farthest, to the right side of the road, they had really liked. The R B's to stay right up on the pavement, their shoulders should get sore up. Yeah, they said if, if that was the case, uh, they don't have a problem with the speed issue, uh. Whatever it is, they're kinda, they're a little bit, you know, you, you run up on one twenty miles an hour. It is, can be a hazard, you know, it's a, it's an Amish buggy with lights on it, that's basically what it turns out to be, you know. But, you know, you got bicycles on the road and stuff like that, um, and they didn't have any problem with hours, any, any hours. Was fine because they're all lit up and everything. Uh, but they'd like to see them up on the roadway and not on the shoulder. But I'm sure, not quite sure.
Law enforcement, I was not wanting to see them on.
Well, the citizens aren't in here.
You know, well.
Cause that's the biggest complaints I hear, they're on the road and they're doing fifty miles an hour.
Well, you know, you know, the speed is one thing, but, you know, the thing is, is, you know, I, I worked in St. Helen for five years up there. And they run down the side of my road, and, and, uh, out there, and it throws stones all over the road. And great dust going down the road, I mean, just go into St. Helen any day during the summer and you got a dust storm. You know, and even though they paint a little wider shoulder, you know. But, yeah, I was surprised, I was surprised the road commission even said that, because usually.
Same time.
Well, usually, well, you know, I was in the trucking business for years, you know, I was, though. Nobody should drive on a road and then be by the road, never break up if nobody rides on it, you know? But I was really surprised that they, they had that, I would, I would have thought, I would have thought, talking to them, they would say. We don't want them out there at all, you know, and I haven't heard that yet, I haven't heard that in any of the townships yet, uh. About excluding any roads, I, I could understand it. If, if the township, and or city wanted to exclude certain roads, you know. Other than highways, you know, fade roads, you know.
Oh, I think Row City already has, they have, they have their. Signs up their directions.
Or their alley.
Yeah, their alleys and stuff, but they want the spoilers on, they don't want them on every road in, in city, Row City.
Yeah. Right.
That's been a given from the beginning.
Right, and they have, they can do that, they, you know, any township can put an ordinance in, strengthening the existing law. But, uh, I was, I, I don't know, I, I was hoping, I don't know if the movement's gonna turn around and send us something on paper. But that's what they, they told me, I would hope that we'd get correspondence from all the townships.
Have you heard back from any?
No, not, other than the ones I've already reported on, uh, I know Logan was gonna talk about that at a future meeting, I don't know when they meet.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so they may have, uh there was one other township.
Coming through tonight.
Yeah, one of them uh supervisors sent me emails that they would wanna talk about it too. So I think by the time January rolls around, we'll maybe hear one or two more.
Uh item four C, the ARBA.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to do a couple of things on our, uh you have the latest updated list. Uh and obviously, we have another one that came today with. N M C A C. Couple of things, the first thing I'd like you to do, if you were of a mind. Is to actually put a resolution on next week that will first recognize a uh calculation for the lost revenue. And why don't I ask you to do this for us, because this will now kind of free us up a little bit more, just in terms of how you end up spending the dollars. We've talked about this in the past, they talked about how uh calculation showed that all the ARBA dollars could be categorized as. Lost revenue, which is one of those categories that the federal government has already recognized. So that would be just the formal action to actually recognize that that's been done. Second item, I'm serious, top of the project list, is that we put uh five hundred thousand for each of the fiscal year. Maybe I missed print, maybe not, but I was gonna say for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh at least recognizing that uh five hundred thousand literally is lost revenue to the general fund. And then the third thing I would suggest, and just have you uh talked about it here, is that we. Put the formal request to the departments or county projects. So we've had a few of them that we've talked, we've talked about generator for this building, we've talked about uh, there was a. Uh body scanner at the jail, uh we've talked about loosely uh the entrance to this building, it may be making it A D A compliant and so on. That um what I would suggest is that we put the call out formally now to the departments, tell us what those projects are. Bring those back so that one of the January cow meetings, we have the list of what those are. And can begin weighing which ones you want to think about, and this is just again, my thinking and need to. Talk about this as a board uh for consistency, is that we end up taking care of our issues first. Uh and again, that they end up being one-time projects and not long-term uh getting to a position or anything. Like get that process going, and then that'll help by the time the second installment comes in, probably, I forget, is it March or May? I think it's May, uh that those projects will have already, you have discussed those, so they'll be in the works. We'll know then about uh how much is left over, if you want to put those out into things like the library request or any other nonprofits that are out there. Uh but it'll also give you the experience of having gone through that internally, and now you know what to look for and what you want to require. Uh and uh put the call out into the community.
I agree, and I think uh I think we need to, the fibers need to. Get to a some level of agreement. Do we want to first prioritize county? Or are we going to mix everybody in, every, every, everything on the list in, and then weigh it out? I would like to see county items weighed weighed the heaviest. So that's like, like Tim just said, prioritize county things first, if there's anything left over. Then we start looking at things older, and Mark's idea with with uh. Sharing costs.
Collaboration.
Yeah, collaboration, I think is a great way to do outside stuff, you know, like. You mentioned with the, that library elevator, there's five other entities involved in this, four townships and the city. You know, if they kicked in, even if they, even if they kicked in a a percentage and. Just, just, just for an idea's sake, the five of them paid fifty percent of it, the county paid fifty percent. Just an idea, not necessarily it's going, maybe it's, maybe it's more like eighty-four, eighty-twenty or something like that, I don't know. But uh for things outside, but I think there's enough things, I think there, if we really look at things. There's gonna be a lot of things right here at county, at the county level, and I'd just like to know. Between the five of us, if we agree to first prioritize the county.
Mr. Sorek.
Well, I think we should definitely prioritize, you know. What needs to be done for infrastructure for county itself. And again, you know, I I go back to Craig said, if when we start looking at these outside projects, you know, if there is. Collaboration lines available, you know, some, some organizations don't have that ability to take and. Provide any matching funds, let's say, you know, so we couldn't do a. This is a um. William's here today from assessment, yeah, she's asking for five thousand, they really don't have the ability to take, you know. Say, hey, if you give us five thousand, you know. We've got another source to to match your, you know, to provide a percentage of that funding, you know, so you've got to. I think look at those that don't have that ability separately from ones that do have the ability. Now, I don't think it's fair to to look at, let's say, we use, let's use a library for example, you know, library wants eighty-six thousand dollars. And if nobody's willing to kick in, I'm not so willing to take and give the library their eighty-six thousand dollars when I could look at another. Agency that doesn't have the ability to take them. Another source to provide some funding, I would weigh that one more heavily. Than I would want us to flat out, you know, give you the money.
So I I hope you guys understand what I'm trying to say, but I I I'm kinda uh agreeing with Craig. Um I guess the way I look at it is getting the biggest bang for our buck. For the whole county. Um what's gonna benefit most everybody in the county? Um that's quite a sum of money, and and I think it can benefit a whole, whole heck of a lot of people.
Well, I definitely think that there's a, there's a huge need inside the county for um some capital investments that we need to make. The first buildings. There are. Other, other needs in the county as well, um this one that comes to mind is the half-empty school in Rose City. That we still aren't doing anything with. There's, there's lots of needs.
Well, I guess when I say.
Hang on just a second.
Well, when I say county, I mean.
Craig, it's my, my, hang on, it's my turn, okay? So my, my opinion on this is, is uh, I think we should put the request out there, see what the county needs are. Um take a look at all of those and then make a decision from there, I mean, we don't even know necessarily. We're making assumptions of what the needs are, but I think put the request out there to the department heads, to the elected, elected officials. And then sit down and talk about this, um I think we're all hearing at our township meetings. What they're thinking, how they want to spend their their monies, um along with our boards, and and so I think we have an idea of what the needs are at our, at the. Individual level or at the township levels, but I think, I think we need to continue to talk about this, put this out there, see what these needs are. And then bring it all back to the table. Um I think we can be the spokesperson from our township levels of what they're discussing and what their needs are, and I think that can be part of this. Continuing conversation. Commissioner Scott.
Well, just, when I say county, I mean the county government. First, not every entity within the county, I mean, when I say county, I I like excluding townships, I'm excluding the cities. I'm talking about our infrastructure that we own here, our assets. That, that the Oklahoma County Government owns, I don't need to say. You know, they, the townships, the cities, the nonprofits, the services that we don't pay for. Or we don't, we don't own, you know, uh uh to per se. That's separate, anything that's got a separate income other than us is separate, take care of us first. Then if we have something left over, we go start looking at it and have a process to weigh out priorities.
I think that's.
Prioritize what we have.
I think that's what all of us just said, that we are looking at the county level. But then, but put the requests out there to the department heads, to the elected officials to see what their, their needs are.
You expanded on townships too.
No, what I said was, let's see what their needs are, continue to discuss what our townships are requesting, we go to the meetings every month, we hear how they're. What their needs are, how they're wanting to spend their money, what their ideas are, I think we can continue to discuss that, but in the meantime, let's see what is needed at the county level. And I don't think we need to stop those communications, but I I think we can further discuss that.
I'll tell you, four, four million over the next, the next couple of years, it sounds like a lot of money, but. When you're looking at a quarter of them.
Correct.
Going for one project there, we got projects a lot bigger than that.
But I don't think we can make any dec- decision until we know what the needs are, and I think the way to do that is to put it out there to ask.
The next uh cow meeting, let's begin formulating like review criteria. So start discussing that before all of them land here, I'm gonna say mid-January, they'll have an idea of what you want to look for, and we can talk about waiting. If there's certain uh issues that get resolved, maybe it gets weighted higher, so. We talk about waiting, how we would do that, make it uh, you know, a fair evaluation for everybody. But at the end of the day, uh you can have, you know, projects that are really good, but you think one down here is gonna have the most impact, you get to put it at the top of the list. At least to give you some way to uh, you know, compare the projects and then make the call.
I guess I'm, what I'm saying is. We weigh out all the, our own stuff first, and then when we're done with that. We're done weighing out ours, we spend all the money on the, on the stuff that the county owns. Then if there is something left over, I'm gonna tell you, I I don't think there's gonna be much. And then, then we start looking at everything else. And we can weigh out if it's gonna be municipalities before, before uh uh. Nonprofits or or they're all in the mix, that's a whole separate discussion, I think.
I don't, again, I don't disagree with that, but it doesn't mean that if something's brought to one of us, that we can't bring it next, at the next committee, the whole, when we're discussing this, that we can. At least bring it to the table.
Oh, that that's fine, all I, I guess what I'm saying is two different lists, two different lists we're running, that's what I'm saying. All the stuff under the county right here, all the other stuff, townships, nonprofits, assessment centers outside the county.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, I'm hoping that we can, we can say that we're gonna look at this, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. I'd rather not. Compare a county project with a township project at the same level. I'm gonna wait till I get a county stuff done, and then I'll look at township, go to a separate, off to separate list. If there's any money left over after here, then we'll grab up the, the other list and start looking, that's where I'm at.
I I I hear you, you repeated it, so I got it.
I know, I know.
Again, we are constituents' voice, so I don't, I don't want to say for sure that our list of our county is gonna be completed before we look at this other list.
So that's your.
So I'm not a hundred percent on board with that, but it did help um with that education that took place. Uh it through uh E D C there in Michigan Works, M S U uh was part of that, as far as these, these townships are still. Uncertain of how to spend it, and um so any more educational that I hear about, I will forward to you and you can distribute. Um the townships were very pleased with that, I had a, a one asked me yesterday. In a store, if they have to put the ARBA money in a separate fund, or if they can put it, like I'll, I'll ask and I'll go back to you, but anyways.
And you know, first thing I would suggest they do is go through that exercise to determine their lost revenues. They might find it all fits into that category, just like we did, and then really, it's, it opens up the floodgates that anything you want.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what we got over the next four years, five hundred thousand dollars each year, so that's a lot of money.
Right now, you need.
But I'd like to get a consensus from the rest of the board here, because if I feel there's a consensus here, what.
They did, they all stated their opinion, correct?
Well, I.
We already went around to everybody.
Make a motion that matters from the.
That's where we were going for, that's what I was gonna say, yes. So we have the resolution you want, you want for the meeting for calculation for lost revenues, correct?
That, right.
You also need the five hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, correct? And the only other thing you requested at this time was a formal request to go to county department heads and elected officials, correct?
Right.
So we covered the three things you asked for.
Yes.
Okay.
What was the second thing?
The five hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, that's all you need right now.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
And we'll continue to put this on at the next.
Oh.
Correct.
Yeah, and you'll see this as a standing item on the cow.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott?
Right now.
Okay, perfect. We have, the next is a GPS.
Well, I'll let Brad talk about that first.
Thank you, that's why I turned and looked at Mister Commissioner Record.
I know we talked about this in the past, I just think it's uh important that we get a committee together. With all of the different agencies in the county, um whether it be EMS, transit, sheriff's department. And uh develop a, a system to incorporate GPS. Um asset tracking um response type system. And then see what the uh, the cost would be on that, I don't think it's gonna be all that um. Consuming, but I think it would be a very beneficial uh tool. For all three departments or agencies to be able to benefit from. Um so I guess what my proposal is, is to get a representation from the board. County administrator, sheriff's department, EMS, nine-one-one. And transit, not leaving anybody out.
Well, we were talking about any vehicle, building, zoning.
Yep. But as far as.
Anything at all.
I mean, other than just GPS asset tracking, just talking about like the response system.
I don't include like fire departments, you know.
Yeah, okay.
If they'd like to.
They don't care cost.
City of West Branch, Row City, everybody.
Maybe uh Mike Bowers is our guy.
Mike Bowers as well, yep. Mike and Mike had some um ideas, EMS also had some ideas. As to some systems that they're currently running already, so. But definitely open to any ideas on what the best system would be, that nine-one-one could obviously utilize. And I think that, well, hopefully, there would be some type of insurance benefits that come out of it as well.
So your, your question is?
Can we have Tim reach out to these entities and schedule a meeting? Um with uh at least two of us commissioners on it as well. Try to get something set up.
We definitely should be one, you, you're initiating this. I'm on the uh insurance committee. I can. I can volunteer for that, any, any.
Well, you'd be perfect.
Because?
Because. Be good for it.
Commissioner Scott. Any other session on that?
You don't think so, but I do.
Pardon me, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea, I definitely, let's explore it and. See what the bottom dollar cost is, hopefully, like you said, it's not gonna be that much.
Is it something you would like to do? Would you like to be on the?
God, yeah, if you don't.
Oh, go ahead, speak up.
Well, no, I don't want to be the ball hog, you know?
You have more expertise than I do, so.
That mean, and you know what, maybe a good, a first set of eyes, somebody's not jaded like I might be.
Are you jaded?
Might be a good thing.
It's, it's your call, I don't, I don't care.
I mean, I'd be more than happy to do it, believe me, I really would, but.
So go ahead.
It's, you're the chair, it's your call, girl.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sorek.
All right.
I think you did a poor job, I'll step in. Okay.
I'm on EMS board too, so I I I'll touch bases.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have a hand in any of this.
Cause I'm trying to think, Paul's on the board too, and I'm gonna work.
Did we?
They've got something, don't they?
Did we make a decision on the secretary, um did you, where are we with that? That's not on here.
It's not, um last meeting, uh you discussed uh, I think we came to the conclusion that the personnel committee. Uh would be the two that sit in with me on the interviews, I did put the job up on, it's on the website now. I did put the job up on, it's on the website now, but posted it to Indeed on Monday and had to pause it on Tuesday because thirty-seven applications had already come in. Of those thirty-seven, I would say about half a dozen just weren't qualified and they already disposed of those. By about half, then six, maybe as many as eight. Oh, that did, I mean, there's just nothing in the background that would suggest that this was a field they had any desire in at all. Some very good ones that have come through, others that maybe we need a little bit more vetting. But what I'll do, at least my plan is, give it a probably a boost another three next Friday on our webpage, because that's actually drawn a few as well. And then I'll get with a committee and we will select probably our top five, I'm gonna say, yeah, in for interviews.
Cause I didn't, I, I guess I'm gonna disagree with the aspect, I know that was thrown out there, but we didn't come up with a, I, I would like to talk about that. We did not come up with a conclusion as far as what we were gonna do as far as interviewing in, in going forward. You had, we had talked about it, then we, we heard from him, Commissioner Scott, and then it was kind of left. Now, did anybody else, did anybody else reach out to you afterwards? I know I sent you an email.
You sent me the email, that's the only other conversation I've had.
Was Commissioner Matt, are you interested in anything else different taking place with the secretary position as far as hiring process?
No, I, from my understanding, like I say, the.
Him and him.
Him and him. We're gonna, so we're gonna come and take care of that. That was kind of my.
Well, I think that most of the process could be handled through the committee that we already have developed. I guess I would like to maybe see like the, like Tim said, the top five or top three candidates for the whole board to review.
To review and then.
This is gonna be a secretary for the board as a whole and for Tim as well.
Commissioner Sorek.
I'm open.
So to what?
I, I think it can be handled, but if you, if you want to sit in on it.
I do not, you can ask Tim what my email said, what did I say?
Actually, I think you're.
It could be him or her.
I had no interest in doing it, I was stepping away, but I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to, to, to voice what they would like. That is not the feeling that I.
I mean, if, if, if somebody else would like to sit on it, you know, I'll bow out and Craig and somebody, you know, I didn't know if you wanted to or not.
I do not.
Um, you know, I think that we can, you know, come to a fair conclusion and, and then, you know, let the rest of the board review. I don't, I don't know, you know? Probably don't want to get into the interview process, but say, hey, these are the, the top three, top five, you know? This is our recommendation after you look at them.
Yep.
You know, if that's the way you want, I think that's fair, so.
Agreed, at, at least so we all have, feel like we, we have a say.
You've got eyes on it, and you know, I mean, it's not just, you know, these two and Tim making the decision, everybody's got input, which is the right thing to do.
Commissioner Scott. So we are going to, what exactly?
I try to spare you some of the day-to-day things. We can, I, I mean, I can certainly boil them down to the candidates who meet qualifications, normal qualifications, and let each commissioner look at every one of those and, you know, give us your top five. And then we could kind of all compare notes that way. But I'm telling you right now, it is tedious, and when there are this many, you're talking a lot of time going through each one of these and trying to remember how did this compare to that one and, and, you know, doing your, your own ranking. And even with a score sheet, that gets tough because, gosh, is that skill really that much better than what this person put out? And that's the level of detail that I try to spare you up because it is tedious and it does get time consuming. But if you're interested in doing it, the more the merrier, you know, happy to.
I say top three, I think all we need to see is the top three, you, you three can decide all the way down to the top three and then we can.
Can, can you send out top three, top five, top ten to each one of us and then poll us and not violate the open?
If you respond to me, you don't talk to one another. Okay, you're good. Okay. And again, we'll put the little
reply.
Well, just it won't be a reply all, that, that won't be an option, so that won't happen. So you would have to consciously do things wrong, you know, which, which you won't do, so. But yeah, that's, that's the key, otherwise if you're collaborating together, then we're gonna have to do that at a meeting. Here, you're just looking at candidates and telling me, here's who I think are the top ones. The committee will meet and will obviously keep everybody informed of every step of the way, but that way you avoid that, that trap of violating open meetings.
Are you guys go with top three?
I think it'll be top five.
Okay.
I do.
Top five.
I'm fine with them figuring out who the top five is with Tim and then we can decide.
Perfect.
In a meeting from there.
Okay. Top five. Uh, there's nothing, uh, public comments. This is the final public comment, so this is for anything. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Come on, Sheriff, if you're gonna give us some update on something, you got, you're in the paper.
Is there any public comment on the phone? No public comment, so Greg, are you on the phone? It's not on the phone.
I just checked email, he has an email again either, so he may still be in whatever that hearing was.
Yes, yeah, so this was gonna be related to the KCC mileage. Can I, I forwarded those emails yesterday, can I, can you distribute them to the commissioners so they can get caught up to date on what's going on? We can put this on next week if we have to go into a closed session then. There is some hopefully positive updates and I can leave it at that right now. Is that it? I think so.
So we're not gonna be with them then?
He's not, we can't have a closed meeting, I asked him, we can have a, I, I, yeah, I can't discuss it or without our attorney present in a closed session. And he, I did talk to Greg yesterday, he recommended these updates in a closed session. So. Yes, sir.
Little quick update. You guys talked about twenty-five churches. A correctional, or I'm sorry, academy for the two individuals in Delta. Let's start on them. Shop of the Hero is going well. Article. I've got two articles coming out in papers for two gaps. But it's a little off their background, their history, so on and so forth. There'd also be an article on a correctional officer that was graduated, graduated from the correctional academy, so.
That's the one that's pictures in the paper today.
Is it today?
Well, I looked at the online paper yesterday.
Okay, yes, this may have been, but anyway, that's out there and our, our night shift is going well.
That's the biggest news.
Yeah, it's going well.
It's playing all year.
They worked last, last weekend, started last Friday. Not a lot of activity out here, but they're hitting a lot of townships, I was looking at your, your daily, they're out there being seen.
What nights are they currently, cause townships are asking, what nights are they working?
The thing is, I mean, like, it's on a rotation thing.
Okay.
I don't want to give out the dates and times because I don't want the thieves to know when we're working.
So that's, that's fair, how many, so when we're asked, so we're all given the same information, how many nights then per week? Out of seven nights, how many nights is night shift?
One week gonna be four, the next week gonna be three.
Okay.
In two weeks, we should have, within that time period, we should have two more trained, they're coming down to almost the end. And we're gonna put them up on nights that will be full staff. We're looking at it two weeks, maybe even sooner, so it all depends on where we end up with the training schedule with these. And they're both gonna be very good for us.
So when it's full staffed, it's seven nights?
Yes.
Okay.
It is coming.
Just want to make sure we're all telling everybody the same.
These two individuals that are getting trained are, are ready for everything.
So what's the timeline on that, the end of January?
No, two weeks, two weeks or less.
Two week, two weeks after they graduate, they'll be on, oh no, what I'm asking is.
We're training two more right now.
Seven days a week, when's that start?
Two weeks or less, we have full staff up on the nights.
All right, all right. Cause you promised me back a few months ago, you stood right there.
Things turn.
Yeah, but you promised.
Sheriff, it's just our, our townships are, are meeting this week and into next week, and I just want to make sure we're, when we're asked, we're giving accurate information.
We should, we should be up and running, no later than two weeks, if it's on schedule.
You'll keep us updated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we'd be safe to say January first, just in case.
I'm, I'm looking at mid-December, but yes, yes, January be.
I'm, I'm just saying, we all know things are going south in a hurry.
Training right now and they're, they're excellent, they'll be good, so.
Anticipated it is in two weeks, but that's the guarantee, that's no guarantee.
January, what do you?
I got, Mr. Spencer just let me know that people complain they can't hear. He's saying people should, that address us need to be at the paper.
Thank you.
Let you know what our IT type.
Thank you. So can you provide those updates very similar again next week at the meeting? Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Doc, that's for giving us a nice report.
A motion to adjourn.
I second that, motion adjourned, meeting adjourned at eleven twenty-one.